Good evening and welcome to the Livonia City Council. The Honorable Vice President Jim Jolly will lead us in the pledge allegiance. Will you all rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very, very much. We'd like to welcome you to the 1,877th regular meeting of our Livonia City Council. This is a voting meeting. Minutes of this meeting will be approved at the next regular scheduled meeting, which will be held on Monday, August the 12th of this year. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Vice President Jolly.
Present.
Councilmember Kritzman.
Present.
Councilmember Barr.
Here.
Councilmember White.
Present.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Here.
Councilmember Meakin.
Here.
President Toy.
Here. We're all here. Great, okay. Then we have the presentation of the 1,876th regular meeting of the City Council, which was held on Monday, June the 8th of this year.
Madam President.
Yes, Vice President.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Support.
Vice President Jolly has moved, supported by Councilwoman McIntyre. Would the clerk please take the vote?
Vice President Jolly.
Aye.
Councilmember Kritzman.
Aye.
Councilmember Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Aye.
Councilmember Meakin.
Aye.
President Toy.
Aye, motion passes. Council, we're in, or down to council personal announcements, tributes, and recognitions. Was there anyone before I call on Councilwoman McIntyre? No? Okay, Councilwoman McIntyre.
All right, it's my pleasure to recognize a very special organization in our community, Seedlings Braille Books for Children. And I know the executive director, Deborah Bondi, is here. And Ms. Bondi, if you'd like to come down to the podium, well, I have the pleasure of reading this. And I'm going to read the commendation, because I think this is all important. Seedlings Braille Books for Children has been recognized for providing the Detroit area with 35 years of service. And Seedlings Braille Books for Children was founded in 1984 by Deborah Bondi, who began making the books in her basement office. Her goal was to increase the availability of Braille Books for Children, which in turn would promote their literacy skills and love of reading. And Seedlings Braille Books for Children has continued to provide children with high-quality, free, and low-cost Braille books and encyclopedia articles. And Seedlings Braille Books for Children produced 5,000 books per year since 1990 and has produced over 545,000 Braille books and articles since conception. And Seedlings Braille Books for Children has published its 500th book in the United English Braille, making them a leader among Braille publishers in the United States. And I'm going to read this on behalf of the mayor. I, Dennis K. Wright, Mayor of the City of Livonia, County of Wayne, State of Michigan, do hereby take this opportunity to join with the Livonia City Council to congratulate and commend Seedlings Braille Books for Children on its dedication and congratulate the individuals whose hard work has made this possible for their longstanding business. And I don't know if you'd like to say a few words, Deborah?
Mayor Wright and City Council and all the citizens, I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for this honor, for this commendation, which we will display proudly at our Seedlings office. But I wanted to thank you for so much more than that. Yes, I started Seedlings in the basement of my home in 1984, but it was not in Livonia. Although in 1990, I found it necessary to find a new home for my daughters and for Seedlings. And I looked all around the metro area. And I was looking for three basic things: a safe community for us, really great schools for my daughters, and affordable housing, which those last two don't often go together. And I found Livonia, and I got those three things and so much more. So I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for welcoming us, for nurturing us, for all the wonderful people here, the corporations, the civic groups, that adopted our mission to help blind children and have helped us to grow into a real vital, important nonprofit organization that sends books all over the world from our little place here on Farmington Road. So I thank you, keep up the good work. Thank you to the leadership.
I just, I'd like to add one other thing. Well, two things, actually. Do I remember correctly that that first special Braille typewriter was made for you by your father?
Yes, it was.
Yeah. And to go from then, and Seedlings has an open house every year in, is it?
October.
October. And if anyone in the community, anyone up here, has not had the chance to go, and even if you had, I can't tell you what a magical thing it is to go to that open house, especially if you've never been, and have the opportunity to see the work. That is just, a lot of things are called life-changing, but the work that Seedlings does really is life-changing. And you'll meet the people there whose lives have been changed. So thank you from the very humble beginnings to your vision and your great team, who has made Seedlings really a global force in Braille books for the blind. I don't know if anybody else would like to add anything?
Vice President, please.
Thank you, Madam President.
Yes.
Obviously, just like everybody else in Livonia, I'm a big fan of the work that Seedlings does. Relatively recently, I've been given the opportunity to see some of the internal workings of Seedlings, and it's a truly tremendous organization, not only from the outside, but the inside. I can't imagine a more professional or a more respectable organization in the nonprofit sector or anywhere else. So we congratulate you and thank you for everything.
Thank you.
I'd like just to add that you've done a wonderful job this year. Couldn't have done it without you. And we're very proud to have you with us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And just to add, I think last year you had Justice Bernstein, if I'm not mistaken, which was a special treat.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, was that right? Yeah? And I just have to tell you that you're inspirational and your influence, for that matter. When I was in the Capitol, there was Doug Spade, who happened to have, was vision impaired in the House of Representatives. And Doug was a Democrat. And I was on the other side of the aisle, and we joined together to create, because there was people that were visually impaired that were coming up to the Capitol. And we always give them a book when they tour the Capitol. But it was an emblé, and we were able to produce that emblé. And since those times back, I'm not sure what year that was. It was before Lincoln was shot. They go ahead and they use that book for folks that, and families, that bring them forward. So we're very proud to call your organization and all the people that work with you home. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes. All right. Any others? No? Okay. If you want to come up, well, if you have someone with you, do you have a camera or anything? Not, oh, does anybody have an iPhone that they could take a photo? Linda, our treasurer, oh, our clerk? Can you be the official photographers?
All right. No guarantees, but go ahead.
Let's, yeah, let's go down the front. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah, sure.
Show people the front, so they ask you to go to the front. Nothing changes. Put the link. Ready? Wait, 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 wait. There we go. Okay, everybody smile. Smile. Okay. The clerk's office is the best. Must be that guy repeated.
Okay, this council's had a nice practice of inviting folks in from the community and recognizing them. And I just have to share with you, this is a special one for me. I happened to be over at, where were we? At the Irish Tea, it was, and they did a very lovely job, Green Meat. And ran into this just delightful woman and her daughter at our table. And Mickey, I don't like to go into ages, but Mickey happens to be 101 years old. And I'm telling you something, she is so unique that you have to hear her story. And we want to give her an accommodation, which I'm going to hand to Mr. Jolly, or Vice President Jolly, to read for us tonight. And then we're going to call Mickey up, and you're going to be just elated with her background. Thanks, Jim.
This is like a pop reading test.
Yes. Yes, sir.
Okay. So on behalf of the City Council, this is a resolution. Whereas Alice Mickey Pavlet was born on April 18th, 1918, and recently celebrated her 101st birthday. And whereas Mickey was born in Pennsylvania, later moved to Detroit, and has resided in Livonia for the last 25 years. And whereas Mickey was blessed with four children, six grandchildren, and 10 great-grandchildren. And whereas Mickey has been active her entire life, she enjoyed ice skating and playing tennis until she was 89 years old, won gold medals in the Senior Olympics for the tennis singles, as well as for downhill skiing into her 90s. And whereas Mickey has modeled Fort Purple Door in Livonia Mall, she continues to play cards and take the city bus to her weekly exercise class at the Senior Center. Now therefore, the Livonia City Council does hereby take this opportunity to congratulate Mickey on her 101st year of life and wish her many, many more. And that is signed by every one of the City Council members up here and President Toy as well. So we'll congratulate you, Mickey.
Mickey?
Mickey, if you'd like to come up to the podium and?
Come up to the podium? We would love to.
We need you to share your wisdom with us and help us out here a little bit.
Tell us how to go to, no, never mind. Okay.
You left one thing out.
Just one?
I really rely on your van at the Senior Center, since I don't drive anymore. It's wonderful.
Well, we'll keep it going for you.
Definitely.
What would you like to know about me?
Start at the beginning. We got all night, don't worry.
Madam President?
Yes, go right ahead.
I just have to, I'm not really sure what to say, other than to say any, when I think of someone like you at 101 years old, and I think about what you've seen, I think we could probably sit here for three or four hours and pick your brain. You think about what's happened since 1918. It's remarkable.
Well, I was born, and I spent most of my life in Detroit. Grade school, Catholic school, high school, worked for three governments, the federal, state, and city. And I really enjoyed my life and my children. And there are things that happened in my life which you cannot tell. But I was raised in a house with two handicapped people, never even knew they were handicapped, because there was no way of putting pressure or anything on that. My grandmother was a deaf-mute, and she was a dressmaker, which she learned at the deaf and dumb school. And my father had lost his leg when I was quite young. And I don't know if I should tell this, but at 12 years old, I was driving the car. And I retired from Mumford High School. At the time, I went there as a council secretary. The lobby was full of drummers and high school kids, because at that time, that was the thing to do. It came down from the colleges. So we had to crawl out the windows to get out of the office and go home.
So what is the secret to longevity, Mickey?
Do your own thing. That helps. I don't know. I was raised on meat, potatoes, and gravy. And at my age now, if the doctor says, "Take the pill," I take the pill. But I have two sons and two daughter-in-laws that are very supportive, and they spoil me rotten. And I like my condo in Livonia. It is just perfect. And exercise class with Marcia at the Senior Center. She's very, very good. And all of the drivers know that they are to pick me up at Mickey's bench at the condo.
Well, Mickey, thank you so, so much for coming in. And would you like to introduce your family? I know Jill, your daughter's here.
Yes.
Please introduce them.
Stand up, this is Dan.
She says, "Yes, sir."
This is the quiet son. This is Jill. His wife, oh, stand up. A wonderful daughter-in-law. And this is Janet, who was married to my first son, Patrick, who is gone. And this is Gerald, the mischievous one.
Well, thank you, Mickey. We're going to have some photos, if you would, up front. And Vice President Jolly has your tribute. And could you come up with the council? And if your family then would like to take an extra shot with them as well, we'd be happy to do that, okay?
Well, thank you.
Kathy, you're walking, Kathy. Okay, got it. Okay, ready? One, two, three, smile. Very good. Well, it's about the family. Yeah. Will you take another one with the family? Photographers.
Let me take one with your camera? Let me take one with your phone?
I will do one. Thank you.
All right. Can you get the wide angle on us? I think so. Sure. Something to put your strap on, Mickey. Why the lots, if you like each other more than the earth? All of the front room are going, be nice, smile.
Your other ring, Todd? Yeah, you give the engineer the camera, right?
Thank you. Congratulate.
Nice job, Jim. They're going to make your highlights tonight.
Well, that was a real treat. Thank you to Mickey and her family, commonly known as Alice, as well. Okay, we'll go into our meeting. Our department heads to my left are Todd Zalinsik. Todd, thank you. He's our city engineer for all you do. And Mark Terramina, our city planner and economic development director. Thank you again for your work. Also Judy Preby, who has to handle seven of us at any given day. Thank you, Judy, very much. Big challenge there. And to my right is Paul Burnier. Paul is our city attorney and does an outstanding job as well. And to his left is Susan Nash, which does a great job as a city clerk. And out in the audience is our city treasurer, Linda Shield, who we're glad is here this evening, as well as our mayor, Dennis Wright, and many fine department heads who you'll meet shortly. We are going to give you an announcement of four public hearings. We've had a number of public hearings this month. And this one is a public hearing to be held Wednesday, August 21st of this year, at 7:00 PM here in the auditorium at 33,000 Civic Center Drive in Livonia, Michigan. Proposed special assessment street lighting project for Adams Court Site condos, or condominiums located south of Plymouth Road between Eccles Road and Aloys Avenue in the southwest quarter of Section 30, to determine necessity for those lights. That's again August 21st on a Wednesday, council. Also on a Wednesday, August 21st, at 7:00 PM in the auditorium here, Civic Center Drive, 33,000, is Paul F. Bohm from Faso Bohm and LLP Attorneys at Law. On behalf of the Schoolcraft Lodge, Inc., is requesting approval of a commercial rehab exemption certificate for the expansion and rehab of the property located at 31501 Schoolcraft Road, Livonia, Michigan, 48150. And that is in the Commercial District Number Four. Those will also be held and heard on August 21st at 7:00 PM. Also, on Wednesday, August 21st, at 7:00 PM here in the auditorium, petition 2019060104 submitted by Ryan Kresge to rezone the properties located on the west side of Middle Belt Road between Joy Road and West Chicago Road. 8999, 8985, and 8981 Middle Belt Road in the southeast quarter of Section 35, from C1 Local Business to R1 One Family Residential, 60 by 120 lots. Again, that's August 21st here in the auditorium at 7:00 PM. Then we also have again, Wednesday, the 21st, at 7:00 PM, petition 2019060105 submitted by Devois Custom Construction to rezone the properties located on the west side of Farmington Road between the CSX Railroad right-of-way and Schoolcraft Road at 13393 Farmington Road in the northeast quarter of Section 28 from M1 Light Manufacturing to C2 General Business. And again, that's the 21st of August here in this auditorium at 7:00 PM. So council, those are our public hearings. And then we have new data this evening on items 10, 11, 13, and 14 for your review. We also now need to go to audience communication. Anyone wishing to speak to the council that's not on the green agenda sheet for this evening, please approach the podium to my left or to my right. Good evening, Mr. Tizio.
What does he say? Hello, everybody. I have a few announcements I'd like to make.
Could you announce your name and your address?
Ben Tizio, 18634 Dorce, Livonia, Michigan.
Thank you.
A couple announcements, please. I'd like to recognize my son Dominic, who this month is his one-year anniversary for purchasing his new house in Livonia, next to Cass Elementary School across from Stevenson. My daughter Gabriella is a recent LTU graduate in civil engineering. So that makes all four of our family members LTU alumni, Mr. Jolly. January of this year, my grandson Nicholas Hayes, he passed the bar, so he's now a new attorney in Michigan. And also, in May of this year, is the 21st anniversary of my moving my practice, architectural practice, to Livonia. And also, August 5th will be the 25th anniversary of our move to Livonia. And October of this year will be 35 years being married to my wonderful wife, Christiana, which I'm going to go home now and have dinner with her. Chao and have a good night.
Chao. Yes, go right ahead.
Madam President, he left one of those important milestones out. He has at least for the last 25 years been a very esteemed professor at Lawrence Tech.
38, but who's counting?
38. And when I leave my office in the suite of offices that I'm in, I'm forced to look at a picture of his face being on the wall of 25-plus years of service. So I think of him and his Livonia connections every day, and it's always a pleasure to see you on campus. And thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Chao. Good night, Ben. All right. All righty. Council, then, we're going to move into our agenda. If there's no one else wishing to approach podiums for audience communication. Let's see, items one through, let's see, yes, go right ahead, council.
Madam President, before we get started on the consent agenda, I'd like to make a motion to remove item number 10 at the request of our esteemed treasurer, based on the new information that she provided to the council.
Okay. Supported, moved, and supported by Councilman Kritzman, moved by Vice President Jolly. Is there any other comment? Is treasurer, would you like to get up at all? I mean, as far as addressing this? I don't mean you can't get up.
Item's not brought up yet.
Madam President, we'll have an opportunity, I think, on the regular agenda tonight to do that.
Right. I was going to speak to it when it was brought up for a vote.
Oh, pardon me, I thought you wanted it at the beginning. Okay. Good enough. You'll get it twice, then we'll announce you. Okay. We do have reports dated July 3rd, by the way, council, of this year from the Department of Finance for various financial statements of the City of Livonia for the month ending May 31st of this year. We'll receive and file those, Madam Clerk. Thank you. So items one through, well, we've got to take a vote on that quite yet. Okay. Is there any other comments from the audience before we leave that? Seeing none, we do have, what's that?
You don't need a motion, actually, to do it. You can just remove it from the consent agenda.
We'll just remove it then, Madam Clerk. Thank you. Okay. So items one through nine listed on the consent agenda will be voted on as one item. This does not mean that they were any less important than the other items, but they were deemed rather to not be controversial in nature. Do I have a motion?
Madam President?
Yes, please.
Move approval on the consent agenda, items one through nine.
Thank you. Support. Moved by Councilman Barr, supported by Councilman Kritzman. Was there discussion from the council? If none, would the clerk please take the vote?
Vice President Jolly.
Aye.
Councilmember Kritzman.
Aye.
Councilmember Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Aye.
Councilmember Meakin.
Aye.
President Toy.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're under unfinished business, meetings of the committee.
Item 10.
Oh, pardon me, item 10. Here we are, item 10. Okay, we're going to receive and file the communication dated July 3rd of this year. Our city treasurer would like to speak to this.
Actually, we need a motion, Madam Chair.
Yep, correct.
Madam President?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve, oh, well, I'll make a motion to put it in the next regular meeting, or in the next study meeting, excuse me.
Next study? Okay. Is there support for the next study? Support. Moved for the next study by, supported by Kritzman, moved by Jolly. Okay. Got it? Yep. Okay. Go right ahead, Madam Treasurer.
Thank you, Madam President. I asked that it be taken off the consent agenda, because there was information that was sent to our city attorney and myself last week, some updated information regarding this item. Once we had reviewed it, I did send the updated information to council and to everybody who's on e-agendas. And I'm asking that city council, instead of sending this to committee of the whole, as was originally wanted, if this item could be put on the next study agenda of August 12th. And by putting it on the next study agenda, this will allow for discussion among council members, the developer, and also allow for input from residents, plus keep it on the most timely, as scheduled possible.
Okay, comments? Direction? No? We already have the direction, I get it, but any other directions? No? Okay. Anybody from the audience wishing to speak to this? Hearing and seeing no one, would the clerk please take the vote?
Vice President Jolly.
Aye.
Councilmember Kritzman.
Aye.
Councilmember Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Aye.
Councilmember Meakin.
Aye.
Vice, sorry, President Toy.
Aye, motion passes. We are under unfinished business, and we are on Capitol Outlay and Infrastructure Committee report. Go right ahead, Councilwoman White, sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
The Capitol Outlay and Infrastructure Committee met on June 24th, and we discussed the conceptual planning and design of the proposed DPW water and sewer building. This also relates to planning commission, petition 2019050807, which is involving the demolishing and constructing a new building at 12973 Farmington Road. All members of the council were present, as well as the mayor, the city clerk, members of the administration, representatives from Di Maria and Sidoc Group, our partners in this project, as well as Jim Davis, a resident of Livonia. We heard an update from the representatives there regarding the construction of the new DPW building, which will include a garage and a one-story office building. There is a need to remove some, relocate some utilities and to demolish the three existing buildings. We have heard that the plans now have reduced the overall area of the new facility somewhat. We have heard that the plans now have reduced the overall area of the new facility somewhat. The cost, however, has increased because of the fact that demolition and IT costs are now included, and construction manager fees, underground work, and escalation and construction costs, such as the cost of steel and raw materials, et cetera. We were shown the schematic design and were informed that we have been, they have been looking at preliminary estimates for furniture costs as well. A guaranteed maximum price is anticipated to be locked in sometime in late summer or early fall. And so what the committee did was we did not want to hold up any of the demolition work for this project, and we had recommended that a resolution be adopted providing startup costs for that, for the demolition and utility relocation. We knew that DPW would need to provide us additional information regarding costs, and they have done so. And so at this point, based on the new information, the committee is recommending that the council accept the quote of DeAngelo Brothers for performing the demolition and also doing some work with the utility relocation. We also are approving some funds for the utility companies for their costs in removing and relocating some of the utilities, and that we do this in terms of the approval of DeAngelo on an emergency basis so that this project can move along and not wait for the process of competitive bidding to occur. So with that, counsel, I think that's it.
Thank you, Paul. Okay, do you have that down? Moved, moved by the chair and supported by Councilman Meakin. Were there comments from the council? Okay, there is new data dated July 16th of this year. Would you receive and file that, Madam Clerk, for the council? All righty, we do have a motion on the floor. Yes, Councilman Meakin?
To the chairman of the committee, did we want to mention that there was a not-to-exceed price in there?
Yes, there was, but what that price was, I'm not sure I have that information handy, but there was.
I'm sure Mr. Roroff could.
Clarif- Oh, do you mean on the demolition and the, oh, yes, yes. The not-to-exceed cost is $350,000, and funds are budgeted in the unexpended fund balance of the water and sewer fund for this purpose. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman Kritzman?
No, I-
You're all set? Okay. All righty, we do have a motion on the floor. Is there any other comments from the council before we go to the audience? Hearing and seeing no one, anyone from the audience wishing to speak to item 11? Madam Clerk, would you please call for the vote?
Vice President Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Kritzman?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Councilmember Meakin?
Aye.
President Toy?
Aye. Motion passes, counsel, that item will remain in the committee. All right, we're under unfinished business. Number 12 is a request approval for Senior Alliance 2020 to 2022 multi-year plan. Jason Matajewski is the chief information and planning officer as required by the Aging and Adult Services Agency, AASA, to be submitted to the State Commission on Services on Aging. Councilwoman, did you want to move that?
Well, I will move approval of it.
Thank you very much. Do I have support on that?
Support.
Supported by Councilman Kritzman. Okay. Any other discussion on that? Hearing none, anyone from the audience? Hearing and seeing no one, Madam Clerk, will you take the vote on that?
Vice President Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Kritzman?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Councilmember Meakin?
Aye.
President Toy?
Aye. Motion passes, counsel, we're on item 13. It's a site plan petition. It's brought to us by the 18th Street Development to construct a professional medical office building located on the north side of Seven Mile between the I-275-96 Expressway and Hagerty Road in Section 6.
Move approval, Madam President?
Moved by Councilman Meakin for approving, supported by, support? Supported by Councilman Barr. Is there discussion from the council?
Yes, Madam President?
Yes, please, go right ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. So we received new data on this. Specifically, it was a letter that provided further information into a question that I asked at the study meeting regarding the proposed having of an emergency medical facility at this medical office building. Although I appreciate the information that is provided in the letter, and I understand there's some state authority here with the Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs as well, I still have concerns in regards to people driving off the expressway or from elsewhere in Livonia and the nearby communities thinking that this would be a full-service emergency room when it may not be. I'll put that objection on the record, say that I'm not completely satisfied with the information provided as being the silver bullet of an answer, for lack of a better way of putting it. I do have a question to direct to our Department of Law, though. If we should find ourselves in a situation where we have ambulance runs taking people from this proposed emergency room facility to another facility such as St. Mary's because they're not able to receive the facility care that they need, who would be responsible for paying those ambulance runs?
Well, we currently bill for ambulance runs as it is.
Well, I understand that, but would we be billing the facility that they originally came to seeking medical treatment, or would we bill the patients who were under the impression they were going to a place that may or may not be able to serve what they are needing?
Our drivers, our firefighters, our emergency workers should be trained to the point that they're going to take them to the right facility to begin with, because what they do is when they triage somebody, they contact the rooms, the hospitals, to find out if this is where they should bring them. So they should, that shouldn't be a problem, but I've never researched the issue, but my guess is the bill would go to the, to the individual and not to the facility.
Okay, so the question, my question specifically wasn't for our own EMS providers here in the city of Livonia or elsewhere taking people there. The, the letter that was provided goes into great detail why that would not happen, but rather if somebody drives in, in their own family vehicle to this medical facility, and if they were not able to receive the treatment level that they needed and had to be transported to another, another emergency room, your understanding is that we would bill the patient for that as opposed to, I guess, I'm just, I'm worried about a circumstance where we're going to be having people go to one thing that they think is an emergency room that can serve them whatever needs they may have, and then we're going to be having ambulance runs go to another place consistently because that may not be the case.
We have no process to bill anybody other than the individual. I don't, I can't imagine that if we sent a bill to Beaumont Hospital for the ambulance service, that they would send it back with, with a check. We've, I've never seen that issue come forward, but what our billing always goes to the individual.
I understand as well. I don't think I've ever heard of anything like this, to be honest with you. That's why I have so many questions in regards to it. So I'll just put that objection on the record. I, I'm concerned with this being called an emergency room, an emergency facility and being labeled as such. Thank you.
Any other comments at this point? I'll read in the new data so that you can have time to think. We have new data, Madam Clerk, in the letter that was dated July 15th of 2019, was received from Connie O'Malley and Tom Kelly, Vice President of the 18th Street Development. If we would receive and file that, please. Then we have a number of other ones, a communication received from Tom Kelly, Vice President of 18th Street Development LLC dated July 2nd of 19, enclosing revised site plan sheet C110, C210, and C310 dated July 3rd of this year. Also, the landscaping plan L1.10 dated July 3rd of this year. The electrical site plan sheet E0.03 dated June 24th of this year, prepared by HK Architects, and the sheet P2.03 dated August 2nd of 19, prepared by Peter Basio Associates, Inc., with respect to this item. If we could receive and file all that data, please. Okay, counsel, I'm going to go to the, oh, pardon me, go right ahead.
I did want to make one comment about this. I want to thank Mr. Kelly from 18th Street Development on this. This is a very difficult project dealing with our historical commission, and they resolved the problem over time. They worked with our commission very well to come up with an adequate resolution to the problem, which benefits the city. Tearing the original structure down and creating a new building, I think, makes perfect sense for this location, and it will be a better-looking facility when the project is completed. And then I'd also like to welcome Beaumont to actually Livonia proper. You're a neighbor so far, but not quite in Livonia, so welcome to Beaumont as well, and I wish everyone the best of luck in this project.
Okay, yes, Madam, our Councilwoman McIntyre.
With respect to my colleague, Mr. Jolly's concerns, which I'm glad that he expressed them and put them on the record, I'd like to say that, you know, these discussions we have hypothetical about you're in a car, you see an emergency room from the freeway, the best emergency, first of all, if, if you're in an acute life or death situation, the very best thing to do is to call 911. But we all understand there are situations where someone, for whatever reason, is transporting someone, someone becomes ill. The best emergency room is a high-quality emergency room near you, and it's my understanding from everything I've read and everything that was said last time, you will certainly be able to provide life, life-saving, stabilizing treatment. So if someone's in cardiac arrest or cardiac distress, being able to get to your facility immediately is going to provide them with access to care that they wouldn't have if they stayed in the car for another five or 10 minutes. And I think it's, we, we need to make sure that our personnel, our dispatch personnel are trained correctly, that it's incumbent upon other ambulance providers in the area to understand the facilities. They do that anyway. So I'm comfortable that, that what we're providing will be another life-saving asset to this community and will improve the overall care and accessibility to care in our community. So thank you, and thank you for responding to our concerns.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Anyone else before we go to the audience? Anyone in the audience wishing to speak to this item?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Connie O'Malley from Beaumont Hospital, Health System. I'm president of outpatient services. And just to allay any concerns, Councilwoman Jolly, two things I wanted to point out, for this emergency center, they, it'll be run similar to, if not exactly, as an emergency center. So there will be board-certified physicians in that emergency center. The nurses are trained exactly as they are in the hospital. The setup will be exactly as what you see in a hospital. We will follow the emergency medical protocols set by HEMS and DUMCA, and that includes the care that you receive. As was discussed by Councilwoman McIntyre, we do follow all of the protocols and everything that you see within a hospital. Those services will be there. It will be life-saving for a patient who walks in. We stabilize the patient, and then if we need to, we do move that patient. And again, ambulances are provided to do that. We do actually through the, the insurance companies, work with them to provide that transport to a higher level of care. So if you're in a lower level of care and you move to a higher level of care, that is covered by your most insurances. So that is not something that the patient would get balance billed for. So with that, I just want to assure you that we're following all the protocols, all the things that our emergency medicine team does within Livonia and surrounding communities. We have a hospital that is seven minutes away, Beaumont Farmington Hills, which we just put $160 million into, full-service cath lab, stroke certified, pretty much every certification that you can think of is, is now there. We have the support from our Royal Oak team at that site as well. So continuing to help, you know, provide services to this community is our goal. And again, those will be board-certified emergency physicians at that site. So if you come in, you will be treated as an emergency patient at that center.
Madam President?
Vice President, go right ahead.
You know, ju- just to stress this, I, I have every confidence in the world in the level of care provided by Beaumont in general. This is just something new for us.
Yep.
It's something that I, I don't think is all that common in the area. I understand that you have a facility that might be similar in Canton.
There's actually several in southeast Michigan. There's one, Henry Ford has one up in, close to 23 Mile. St. John has one up in the 23 Mile area. We have one in Canton, and this is, there's, there's quite a few, actually. It's, it's becoming more and more.
And I understand it may be the trend in, in your industry to start doing this. And listen, I intend to vote for this. I think overall, it's a great project, and it's going to add great value. I just had concerns. So thank you very much.
Okay. Any other questions?
Do you have a, you don't have an operating room in it, then?
We do. We'll have four suites there, four surgical suites there.
So if you had to do a surgery on somebody, you, would you call in a surgeon, or?
Well, for, our trauma surgeons are going to be covering that hospital. Our general surgeons and trauma surgeons will also be covering that hospital.
24/7?
24/7.
Okay.
365.
Super. Super. Anyone else wishing to ask a question? Nope. I guess you did a good job then.
Great.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. All right. Anyone else from the audience before we take the vote? Okay. Madam Clerk?
Vice President Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Kritzman?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Councilmember Meakin?
Aye.
President Toy?
Aye. Motion passes. Item 14, counsel, is a site plan from our Planning Commission for a quick-pass car wash to be constructed, a new tenant building modified, the parking and the access and the installation, new self-serve vacuum stations with overhead canopy located on the south side of Five Mile between Yale Avenue and Levan Road. Counsel, do you want to give me some direction?
Madam President, I'll offer an approving resolution.
Councilman Jolly has offered an approving. Was there support?
Support.
Supported by Councilman Meakin. All right, Madam, before we go any further, Madam Clerk, we do have some new data. If you'd receive and file the architectural site plan and the details identified on sheet SPA 1 dated July 12th of this year. Thank you very much. Okay, counsel, we have an approving on the floor. Was there any other comments on item 14?
Madam President?
Yes, please, go ahead.
I'll just say for the record again here, I had an opportunity to go out to the site and look at it when it was dark, and the lights were all turned off as indicated by the owner of the facility. He gave a great presentation in terms of how his industry was changing, what they would be offering there, and how this is an improvement to the site overall. I think it's good to have this business in the community, and although in passing this, we will be doing so, one, we'll be passing it once the work, excuse me, after the work has actually already been completed. I think that's something that, in the circumstances, just like a, kind of a blip in terms of the scope of the work initially is understood and in terms of what was ultimately needed, and that's not necessarily anybody's fault, I don't think. So I will offer the approving. I have, and we'll be supporting it.
Okay. Thank you, Vice President Jolly. Is there any other comment or questions? Just have real, one real quick question. We have an erosion kind of situation, it looks like, along that creek. Mr. Toramina, at least, I, I kind of remember that from years ago, and the neighbors, I think part of our testimony was the neighbor had commented on that they had paid for some of that. I know that, that as you come around that corner, there's about maybe, I'm not good at guessing exact lengths, but probably five to eight feet before you hit that creek. Have we done anything, or is that our responsibility or the landlord's responsibility at this point in case we start getting some erosion problems in any regards to that property?
He'll be responsible for controlling any erosion off of the construction site, and soil erosion control barriers should be put in place. I know that, that was discussed at the last meeting, and I've had that discussion with both the petitioner and as well as the engineering department. So until that area stabilizes, we would recommend that they install silt fencing to help control any sediment washing into the creek, because I think we heard from one of the residents last meeting that, that they felt that some of the soil was, was finding its way into the creek. But I, I'm not sure that's the case, but, but nonetheless, I think erosion control barriers would be suitable at this, at this time.
Is that in our, is that in, is that in our approval here? Do we know? I didn't, I didn't read it in our approval. Yes, go right ahead.
Typically, the soil erosion and sedimentation control measures are a requirement of the city's building department, in essence, as part of the process, but in this case, the city's building department, in essence, as part of the process, but in this case, the work's already completed.
Yeah, some of the, but some of the soil is not, has not been stabilized, so until that's seeded or sodded, it would be our recommendation that he put a silt fence in. We can go back out and take another look at it, and if you want to add that to the resolution, we can certainly add that language.
Baker, would you?
I, I'm happy to add that language.
Supporter, would you as well?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll find that out. Everybody understand what happened there? Okay. Anybody from the audience again? Hearing and seen no one, would the clerk please take this? Oh, go right ahead.
I, I just want to say that I think overall this is going to be an improvement over what was there. I am very empathetic to the concerns that have been expressed by the residents. I have been over to look at how things look off the resident's street. I've not had a chance to talk to the residents directly, but I will be going back from time to time just to see how things look as the seasons change and would certainly hope that the proprietor and the landlord would be amenable to continuing dialogue with us if, you know, if things are, are, do not look as we think that they're going to with the additional landscaping, if that makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no other comments from the council, anyone from the audience? Hearing, yes, sir? Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Madam Chairman. My name is Arthur Spencer. I live in Reynolds Ravine. I'm at 15058 West Brook Court, and sorry for coming late to the game. I just kind of wanted to understand what might have been done for noise abatement of the vacuums, because I, I didn't get to read that part or understand that part until I recently became aware of, that might be an issue with the number of vacuums.
I think, Mr. Toramina, do you recall exactly, was there decimals or the petitioner, I think, had that? Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Meakin.
They did do a test with all the vacuums running.
Okay.
And it was less than the maximum allowable decibels that were, are allowed under a normal circumstance. So, and that's with all 10 of them running at one time, which probably isn't really likely, but it is a possibility.
Okay.
And there's also the extra landscaping that the petitioner has put in to abate some of the noise that's going through the, to the subdivision.
I do apologize for coming late.
No, you're fine.
Just trying to understand what's happening.
That's all right.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And I think that was done, if I'm not mistaken, when there wasn't a lot of foliage on the trees and things weren't matured out because of the season, so thank you, Mr. Meakin, for that. Is there anyone else then? No? Okay, would the clerk please take the vote on item 14?
Vice President Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Kritzman?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Councilmember Meakin?
Aye.
President Toy?
Aye, motion passes. Council, we're under new business.
Madam President?
Yes, go right ahead.
Before we move on to the next item, while we have the mayor here, I'd like to ask him for a non-veto letter on this item that we just voted on so that the petitioners can open and get the ball rolling instead of waiting till the next minutes are approved. So the petitioner can open up and get to washing cars so we can actually see what the operation really looks like.
The mayor's indicating that he, he will issue a non-veto letter.
We're okay, Mayor? He said no problem.
Thank you.
Yes. All right, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everyone. Okay, new business, item 15, proposed acquisition of tax foreclosure property from our housing commission, which is located at 19731 Middlebelt, for a total of $11,789.58, which includes closing costs to be reimbursed with federal community development block grant funds. Brandy from our director of our housing commission, thank you, Brandy.
Good evening. I'm here just to request approval to be able to purchase this property. Every year, we work with the treasurer's office to remove any tax foreclosed properties at the county, so we've been doing this over the past couple of years. It's a great partnership. This year, we only had one property. It's a vacant lot just north of Beltire between Seven and Eight Mile and Middlebelt Road. It is zoned commercial between two residential properties. Our plan is just to purchase the property, clear the title, turn around and sell it hopefully to a developer.
Okay, do I have any direction on this?
Madam Chair, I, I'll offer an approving resolution.
Councilwoman White is offering approving. Do I have support?
Support.
Supported by Councilwoman McIntyre. Was there any discussion from the council? Hearing and seen none, anyone from the audience? Hearing and seen no one from the audience, would the clerk take the vote?
Vice President Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Kritzman?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Councilmember Meakin?
Aye.
President Toy?
Aye, motion passes. We're on 16. You're welcome, Brandy. Request to authorize appropriation and expenditure perks from recreation to enable payment to Turf Pro for an emergency repair of irrigation pump motors at Isle Isle Golf Course from budget of $100,000. Mr. Ted Davis?
Thank you, Council President. Ted Davis, representing Parks and Recreation. We're asking council to approve an emergency authorization to Turf Pro in the amount of $16,750. These are to replace both irrigation pump motors that failed this year after our wettest April and May we ever had. It was kind of ironic that the pump motors then failed when we started to need them, so that's what we're asking for council to approve. I'd be happy to answer any questions council might have on this.
Thank you, Mr. Director. Any motion or direction on this?
Madam President?
Yes, go right ahead.
I will offer an approving resolution.
Vice President Jolly is offering approving. Do I have support on the approving?
Support.
Supported by Councilwoman McIntyre. Further discussion from the council? Hearing and seen none? Oh, no, further, there's no further discussion? Anyone from the audience? Hearing and seen no one from the audience, would the clerk please take the vote?
Vice President Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Kritzman?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Councilmember Meakin?
Aye.
President Toy?
Aye, motion passes.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Davis. This is, we're at the point for audience communication. Anyone that would like to speak on any item that wasn't on the green sheet, the agenda sheet for tonight's meeting, please come to the podium. And did you want to?
I did.
You do, go right ahead.
Sorry, this is rare for me. Usually I do not like the podium any more than absolutely necessary, but I have been, I have to give a little something about moving wall is coming to Ford Field. Those of you that are not familiar, this is a scale replica of the Vietnam Wall that was in Washington, DC. It's coming to Ford Field August 8th through the 12th, so please, everyone here, and of course, everyone watching at home is welcome to visit that. It's supposed to be a moving experience, and we'd also like to thank Masco, who is our presenting sponsor for this event. So again, at Ford Field, August 8th through the 12th, we're actually going to have two USO shows. Bob Hope, Jimmy Durante, I'm sure I'm missing someone else, will be out there. I will be emceeing the Friday evening show, so that's the one you definitely want to come and see. Dan West, our chamber director, is emceeing the Saturday show.